Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day of the Lodi and Moore's Parade. I'm Jay Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 96, Class 96. What did we learn in Class 95? Well, we're still going over the United Nations Charter of 1945, right? Chapter 6, Article 33, and Article 33 talks about how to settle disputes, right? So, in order to settle a dispute, you have to seek inquiry, right? Negotiations, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, and then eventually judicial settlement, right? So what are we talking about right now? The last three or four ANPAC study session classes, right? Started maybe around Class 92 or so up to now, Class 96. We've been talking about a declaration of intervention. But what type of declaration of intervention? What's the intervention of trying to settle the question of nationality? The Moors, or should I say the Black people, or should I say the Hebrews? Or should I say the Indians? Or should I say the African Americans, right? Or should I say the Pan-Africans? Or should I say the coloreds? Or what is our name? We have to figure this out. And the answer has always been in front of us, and that's called treaties. If we would've just taken the time to read the treaties, we could've simplified this. We've had a thousand names. We've named the land a thousand names. But what could've settled? Well, this is how you settle. Here's the phrase. When in doubt, pull out the treaties. Because if the treaty supreme law of the land, then why not start with the supreme law of the land, then work your way down from there? Doesn't that just make sense? So with that being said, in Class 95, we're breaking down the treaties, right? We're starting to understand the Constitution of the United States of America of 1789, and we're starting to understand the Constitution, United States International Organization, right? So with those two constitutions, when we start looking at Article 3, Section 2, Article 3, Section 2 of the Constitution, United States and the Constitution, United States of America, is talking about judicial power. And the judicial power is all about treaties. Because Article 3, Section 2 is talking about disputes between two of more states. But yet, the Moors Americans have continued to try to enforce Article 3, Section 2, and go into court talking about, "Are you an Article 3 judge? Are you an Article 3 judge?" Moors Americans have been asking the magistrates that question, and why is that? It's because they, Moors American teachers, taught the students to go in there and challenge the jurisdiction of the magistrates. But here's what the Moors American students don't realize. The Moors American teachers would've never had to tell their students to go in there and challenge jurisdiction if in fact, the Moors American teachers had told the students that their students are simply stateless, and that they don't have their own constable courts. And why is that, Moors Americans don't have constable courts to go to? Because Moors Americans are stateless? And they never had the proper constable courts? Moors American teachers are not telling their students, you would never have to go to some magistrate to ask about Article 3 judge if in fact, that student could've already known the name of their own constable court judge. Think about it for a second. Doesn't that make sense? So the Moors American teachers have been setting their students up for failure to go ask a rhetorical question to the magistrates. Why do I say it's rhetorical? Because the student is asking. That means the student already knows the answer, right? And the answer is no. The answer is no, because if you're saying you're a Moors American, you're making a claim to what? Treaties? You're claiming that you're not a citizen of the United States of America. You're claiming to be a foreign national. So therefore, if you're saying you're not a citizen of the United States of America, that's what Moors Americans say. Then that means you're of a what? Separate state. Then your state should've already had a constable court judge. So if a Moors American's in there asking the magistrate, "Are you an Article 3 judge?", that's a rhetorical question, because the Moors American student who's standing there talking to the magistrate should already know the name of their own constable court judge of their own so-called foreign state. But the reason why they don't know the name is because that state don't exist, and neither does the constable court or the name of a competent constable court judge that would've been sitting in the state to protect that same national that's giving that magistrate all that pushback. We have been miseducated. So in Class 95, we started understanding more about Article 3, Section 2. We started understanding more about Article 6, Clause 2. Article 6, Clause 2, the Constitution, United States of America, talks about what? Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Article 3, Section 2 says Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. But yet, Moors American teachers don't teach you about the treaties. The answer to our salvation was always in the treaties. What else did we learn in Class 95? Here's what we learned in Class 95. Let's go to the board right now. Class 95 was going over Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 6, Pacific Settlement of Disputes. We're trying to settle the dispute about nationality in Morocco. But in Class 95, we've learned about this AA222141, that the Moors say it was associated to CMA. But yet, CMA is not here to defend himself and say, "Man, I have nothing to do with that number." And CMA is not here to say, "Yes, I have everything to do with that number." But under the guise of this number, guess what that number ended up being? Ended up being what's called a placeholder for a future inmate number. Every Moor that keeps putting AA222141 on their documents, don't realize that's a placeholder number, because eventually, you'll end up being an inmate. Why do I say that? Okay, because AA222141 is associated to what? Title 22, Chapter 2, Section 141 to 143, right? You see the 222141? See the 222141? Which is also codified, the United States would say 8 Stat 48434 Stat 2905. That's the codified language. And most Moors are familiar, it was called Public Law 856 of August 1, 1956, right? All of this, right? Is synonymous to this right here, United States Department of Justice. The United States Department of Justice is associated to this number, AA222141. Now, I'm gonna show you a document today that the Moors American teachers are saying that as well. All right? We'll talk about that. So this is where I want to open up, right with the problem, because we'll also talk about solutions today. There's no use in talking about problems without solutions. The only reason, you point out problems so that you can find solutions. ANPAC Study Session is an educational platform to point out problems, then solutions. That's it. Our job is to turn around and decolonize Morocco, right? But the only way to decolonize, first, we gotta find out the problems that Moors are doing that's self-inflicted to self. Then we gotta figure out what the colonists are doing to create an impediment. So both of these things are impediments. Moors American teaching is an impediment, and the colonists are performing an impediment. That's two firewalls we gotta get past. And we'll do it. How are we going to fix it? With Moroccan law. And we'll enforce it through the competent constable court, all right? So let's go ahead and get started. As you know, ANPAC typically opens up with the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount, right? The Constitution is about your preamble to recognize your people, your nationals. About we, the Moors in Morocco, we're not in America, we are in Morocco. How do I know? That's what the treaty said. How else do I know? Because Noam Chomsky said, "We are Moroccans. We are descendants of Moroccans." Then he turns around and says what? Born in America. Now, first of all, let me say this. Was Noam Chomsky's works infiltrated? Yes. But let's keep it simple. When Noam Chomsky says, "We are descendants of Moroccans," right? Then you put a comma. Commu. Because that's a sentence in itself, right? You put semicolon. Born in America. What does born in America mean? It means naturalized in America. We were naturalized Moroccans. We are Dorothy in the Land of Oz. Dorothy was naturalized. And the whole time, she was trying to return back home, and she didn't know how to do it. She, everybody said, "Go see the Oz." And eventually, she found out at the end, all she had to do was click her heel three times. But she would've never known that if someone didn't tell her. So your Moors American teachers haven't told you the real answer to the test. And the three clicks of the heel of Dorothy represented what? Three branches of government. You have to return to a Moroccan government. Governments all have three branches of government. So you gotta understand something, Moors. We have been miseducated with impunity. This miseducation has created negligence and punitive damages for a lot of Moors. We'll keep learning more about this AA222141, because a lot of Moors have gone to jail using this very number. That must be understood. What else about the Constitution? The Constitution has three branches of government. Our Moroccan constitutions have three branches of government under this system. Now, ANPAC's Constitution obviously is an example. But we have three branches of government under our Constitution. That's important to understand. Let's go ahead and get started. So as you know, Moors, right now, we're studying the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. We're in Chapter 6 about the Pacific Settlement Disputes. We're trying to figure out how do you settle disputes peacefully in Morocco? What's the first dispute we had? Well, it's with each other, it's ourselves, us as Moors. The colonists is really not the problem. Moors is the problem and the solution before you start dealing with the colonists. The colonists know all about these documents. The colonists know all about the treaties. They were there when the treaties were being drafted. They were there when all the diplomatic bodies were being established, such as the Diplomatic Body of Tangier, Diplomatic Body of France, of the League of Nations in 1920. The United States of America was there when they established the United Nations, 1945. The United States of America's had plenty of practice dealing with what's called foreign policy enacting constitutions. They understand legislative acts. There's nothing ANPAC Study Session can say to the colonists about international law. They know it already. So guess who don't know? Moors. So when we start to use our competent pen, the United States of America was already anticipating it. They know all our political chess moves we're going to make in advance. They know all our judicial orders we're gonna write in advance. They already know. Why? They've been studying these treaties since 1787. They know the power Moors have. The problem is, the Moors have impeded their own justice. The Moors have delayed their own justice. But those days are about to be over. How do I know? Because if the Moroccan states come together under other obvious parties, and we write declarations of intervention, we will establish what's called Moroccan law, which is legislation. We'll start putting into all this propaganda. We'll start putting into all this miseducation. We'll start classifying beings as being acts of genocide or some conspiracy to commit genocide or attempt of genocide. We'll put it into it. We'll put it into it. It's just a matter of time, but that time is coming sooner rather than later. All right, let's move on. So as you know, we've been building up, preparing to learn more about a declaration of intervention, right? We've been building up to learn more about the declaration of intervention that the United States of America, right? Wrote on behalf of Ukraine, right? And we went over and studied a little bit more about the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. We read over that United Nations Resolution, right? And we already know that Ukraine took Russia to the International Court of Justice under the allegation of genocide, right? So right now, we're not going to dive into this particular case. The reason why I have it up here is because we have to have a declaration of intervention between Moors first, right? These are Moors versus Moors. Based upon what? Miseducation. About what? Our nation, our nationality. So we have to fix this. We have to come together, because a house divided can't stand. But how do you make sure a house stays? You gotta have a strong foundation. And you know what the foundation will represent regarding Moroccan states? It's called legislation. The legislation set forth from the Moroccan states will allow that legislative act to become law, and that law will be enforced by the law enforcement officers of the Moroccan state. That's how you build a foundation. Foundations are built on the law. Civil and criminal jurisdiction. That's the foundation of every state on planet Earth. It is their courts. So when you see the word extraterritoriality that the United States talks about, they're talking about their courts. And their courts get its power from what? Laws. So Moors should've been writing Moroccan law and enforcing it with our constable courts and supreme courts, our own Moroccan supreme courts. That's how you build a strong foundation in order to reign in the order of Moors and reign in the order of Americans. Where? In Morocco, throughout the empire of Morocco. All right, so we're gonna keep talking about genocide, but genocide based upon the fact, our nationality is being genocided. How is it our nationality is being genocided? Well, you cannot tell Moors that they are Americans, because we already know the status of Americans are naturalization status. Our consanguine is Moroccan. Our naturalization status is American. But that's a temporary status. It's a residency like Dorothy. And Dorothy was trying hard to get back home. And you got a lot of Moors Americans are totally fine hanging out with the Wizard in the Land of Oz. But it doesn't make it fair when the students are trying to get out of the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz, and you're keeping them over there and telling them that they're Americans. America represents Oz. So when you tell Black people that we're actually the true Americans, you're keeping them over there in the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. What does jurisdiction mean? Civil and criminal courts. Dorothy was trying hard through the movie to get back home. Why aren't Moors trying to come home? It's because our Moors American teachers already told us we was home in America. That's why. But Noam Chomsky said, "We are descendants of Moroccans." Then we turned around and corrupted his works and said, "Nah, we're Americans." So in Class 95, we took a deeper dive into understanding Article 3, Section 2, right, of the Constitution, United States, only as a point of interest to study. ANPAC Study Session is not about enforce the Constitution. No. This is about understanding the mistakes the Moors have made and talking about enforce the Constitution. We never truly understood their Constitution for who? Americans. Article 3, Section 2, Clause 1 is about the judicial power to do what? To oversee treaties. That's it. The authority, the authority, the authority is treaties. But who oversees a dispute with treaties? It's always a judicial power. Well, who's the judicial power? Well, it depends on which states have a dispute. Listen. It comes down here, it comes down further and says, Article 3, Section 2 is about what primarily? It's about controversies between two or more states. So if Morocco, right, a Moroccan state, has a controversy with a state of the United States of America, then you activate the treaty. The treaty acts as a referee. And who oversees the treaty to be the actual referee? Who's the judicial power oversee it? It is the constable court. Well, who sits at the constable court? Moors. So when a Moor say, "Are you an Article 3 judge? Are you an Article 3 judge?" You should be asking yourself that question. Where is your Article 3 judge that's supposed to be sitting in constable court as a Moor sitting there wearing a fez? The judge is supposed to be wearing a fez representing who? Moors. Tell your Moors American teachers, "Where's our constable court judges?" That is the question you should be asking yourself. Noam Chomsky says, "Study, study, study." And when you think you have studied well, you ask me to study wells. He say, "Who?" Study yourself. You know why he says, "Study yourself"? Because you're asking a question that lets him know you didn't follow the instructions. He said to do what? Study the Europeans. So you can learn how to run what? Governments. So if you're still sitting there asking Noam Chomsky, "What do we do next?" You know what No was thinking? Did you study Europeans so that you can reestablish your government? To be independent, to be self-governing, to govern over Moors? Moors governing Moors? The Europeans specialize in what? Constitutions. The Europeans specialize in what? Legislation. What do they specialize in? International law, revised statutes, policies, codes, ordinances. Did we learn that as Moors, to learn to run our own governments? No. We studied it so we can be an antagonist against what we call Europeans. Only reason why we studied to be an antagonist to get out of their jurisdiction in terms of whatever we got caught up in. We didn't study it so we could do what's called decolonization. We didn't study their laws so we go and establish our own laws amongst Moors. So Article 3, Section 2, Clause 1, when you ask the magistrates, the magistrate should be asking you directly, "Then who do you think the Article 3, Section 2, Clause 1 judge should be? Moors American?" That's what that magistrate should ask you. And your answer should be what? Constable court judge. And the judge, that magistrate say, "Then why are you sitting here talking to me? Where are you at constable court with this dispute?" And the Moors American student will come back and say, "You know, that's a good question. We don't have no constable court." Exactly. Now, sit down and stop interrupting this magistrate's court before I hit you with contempt of court. Isn't that what they turn around and tell you next? Let's continue. We're telling these truths. We learned in Class 95 about the Constitution, United States of America as a learning tool. Clause 2 talks about treaty supreme law of the land, so Moors have already been trying to learn about the treaties, to enforce treaties, instead of reading literature. What I have learned by studying Moors American teachers, 80% of what they talk about is literature. They're not talking about Moroccan legislation. They're talking about 80% of literature, another 20% about the Constitution, United States of America. This is what Moors Americans are talking about, literature, not legislation. Certainly not Moroccan legislation. Even under the guise of Moors American legislation, they don't even have Moors American legislation. Much less the proper name of our people, which is Moroccan. They ain't writing, they're not writing Moroccan legislation or Moroccan or Moors American legislation. Neither one. Telling these truths. So Article 6, let's go back to it. Now, keep in mind, it's not about the enforcement of the Constitution. No, I'm using it as a teaching tool for what your Moors American teacher should've told you. If this is about the supreme law of the land, then they should've automatically taken you over to the treaties. 1836, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, so you could break it down and learn more about it. They should've automatically told you about the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, so you could know more about it. They should've automatically told you about the Act of Outstairs of 1906, which is a Moroccan treaty that restored and resurrected the Moors back into government. It's 123 articles that resurrected Moors governments back into power. And who recognized this treaty? The Sultan himself resurrected the Moors. 123 articles for Moors to enforce. But your Moors American teachers don't teach you about it. And there's other Moors treaties, but those treaties are really bilateral treaties amongst Morocco and Great Britain. That's a bilateral treaty. You got the Treaty of Spain and Morocco, that's a bilateral treaty. There's treaties with France, treaties with Germany, it's bilateral treaties, right? So ones we should technically be studying at this time, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836, the Treaty of Madrid, 1880, and the Treaty of the Act of Outstairs of 1906. Those are the main three we should be studying, because all three of those are still enforced until this very day. All right? Now, let me say something else about treaties. Even though the Act of Outstairs was fully enacted in 1906, here's what you must understand, the proper concept about the context of a treaty. Don't pay attention to the date. That's the date it was what? Established, signed, then ratified, deposed, and promulgated. All treaties are what? Perpetual. What does perpetual mean? It's relevant today. It governs your affairs today. Regardless of what the date is, it was established in 1906, but it is active in the year 2023 because it's perpetual. It's a rolling 24-hour contract until one of the parties petitions to abandon it. Until then, it just keeps rolling over every day. It's been rolling over every day ever since April 7 of 1906. So it's relevant today, March 23, 2023. This is what you must understand about treaty when they tell you, "All the treaties are old." No, they're not. They're perpetual, fool. This is what people must understand. The Europeans don't like to tell you about these treaties, because they know they're perpetual. So they're trying to throw you off the trail and say, "Nah, that's an old treaty. Nah, it's effective today." Matter of fact, once you prove to me that it's not active anymore, how about you prove it? Don't tell me it's no longer active. Prove it. They can't prove it. You know how I know? Because there's been no legislative act by the United States of America. There's been no legislative act by the United States International Organization. Neither one of those legal personalities has ever passed a bill through their legislative branch and pass it over to the President of the United States to terminate themselves as being a party to these treaties. There's no legislative act from the United States of America to terminate. They've never given notice to terminate, because they gotta give notice, and after that, they have to wait what? 12 months. According to Article 25 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1836, Article 25 says it must be a 12-month advance notice. The United States of America is still parties. You know how I know the Moors are still parties? Because the Moors have been stateless. So we couldn't even petition to terminate the treaties, because we didn't even have a state that had three branches of government. A bill would have to start at the legislative branch and then pass over to the executive branch and sign it to law in order to terminate the treaty. So we haven't done it. The United States of America hasn't done it. So don't ever let nobody tell you, "Oh, 1906, that's old." No, it might as well say 2023. Still relevant, it's perpetual. Let's continue. So when you start talking about treaties, it was the Moors American teachers' obligation to teach you about treaties. To teach you about Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836, supreme law of the land. Treaty of Madrid, 1880, right, supreme law of the land. Act of Outstairs of 1906, supreme law of the land, right? Then we should've been studying the history of the Treaty of Fairs of 1912 that used to be the supreme law of the land until 1956, it got dissolved. But we should still study it as history. We should go back and study the French Protector of January 8, 1913. Go back and study its history. But what's still relevant? The ICJ case of France versus United States of America, 1952. That is still supreme law of the land, because that's international law. That's res judicata. Case law. That's precedent. They talked about Moors. It's the blueprint on It's the blueprint on how we get our Declaration of Independence. This case of nineteen fifty-two is still relevant in the year twenty twenty-three. It's case law. Number seven. Now we should be learning about our own ratified, deposed, promulgated constitution as an example of a lowly Moorish parade in Monte Colorado of twenty, 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 twenty-one, right? We signed our constitution on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, putting an end to Black History Month. Ain't no more black history, it never was black history, no such thing as black history, no such thing as Moorish American history. There is such thing as Moroccan history. That predates all of us. As a matter of fact, the treaties. Predate Noah Drali of nineteen thirteen. Treaty of Peace and Friendship came out in eighteen thirty-six. Treaty of Madrid came out in eighteen eighty. Act of Outstairs came out in nineteen oh six. Treaty of Fairs came out nineteen twelve. Then the Fresh Protector came out in January eighth nineteen thirteen, same year Noah Drali established his Old Cannonite Temple. So all this well-settled principle of law came out before Noah Drali. So what was Noah Drali doing? He was just enforcing the treaties. He was prophesizing, if in fact, Moors learn how to enforce their constitutions and treaties, we may restore the empire. That was his prophecy. For Moors to wake up. They're sleepy. What does sleepy mean? You're stuck in what's called your stupor. Stupor means you're still half asleep. But yet you're moving around like the walking dead. And Moors are walking dead because we're what? Brain dead. But we got mobility. But we don't understand our responsibility. And our responsibility was to enforce the treaties because treaties supreme law of the land. So I put all these treaties. I put international law of the ICJ. And I also put Anpack's ratified constitution, and I, Anpack's public inauguration, and I put Noah Drali's one-on-one, see? Uh, thirty-one and thirty-two, they're talking about more vice of Moroccans. I put all of this legislation. And Noah Drali's literature up against Noah Drali's dictionary every day of the week. Moors are not Americans. We are Moroccans that's been naturalized by Americans. That's what we should have been learning. Okay, so according to Article Six. Of the Constitution of United States of America, what we should have been learning from that? And we're going to talk about enforcing the Constitution that meant that we had to have our own state because there's a state on state dispute. So we got a Moroccan state, which is this box to the left. Versus the United States of America and their Constitution, box to the right. Who comes in as a referee? What's the top box? Right, is what? What's the supreme law of land in Morocco? Answer, Moroccan treaties of eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, and nineteen oh six, under the jurisdiction of the insomfacto compulsory consul court orders, judgments, and advisory opinions. And who oversees consul court? It's the Moroccans, the Moors, wearing fezzes. That's what we shouldn't have been doing. But instead, your Moorish American teachers are telling you that the Constitution of United States of America is supreme law of land. Isn't this what they're teaching? How the heck is a constitution supreme law of the land? When in fact, their own constitution said the treaty supreme law of the land. You see what this miseducation is doing to us? What was the problem? Moorish Americans are trying to live in this box. They're trying to say, well, we're Americans. But at the same time, they're saying they don't come under the jurisdiction of the United States of America. But at the same time, they have to pledge their allegiance back to a Moroccan state. So Moorish Americans are right here in the middle. Stateless, they have no state, they're right there in the middle, stateless. That's who's that's right here? That's Moses walking around the desert for forty years, stateless. Right? Because Moses left Egypt. And went right to the desert. Moses then leave Egypt and then pledged their consent back to another state. They're supposed to go from one state over to another state. Moses got stuck, stateless, in no man's land, desert. That's what your Moorish American teachers are telling you. That's the truth. But soon as Moors wake up and realize they had to go from the Wizard of Oz jurisdiction over to, and now return back to Morocco, pledge their consent to a Moroccan state. Now the Moroccan state can have a state on state dispute. Two or more states having a controversy, and what do you do when you have a controversy? You invoke treaties. As the supreme law of land. And who sits on the bench? Moors. Isn't this so easy? It's not, you don't have to have no erudition. You just gotta read. But why would you know to read it if your Moorish American teachers did not at least share the basic information about it? This is basic information I'm sharing, this is fundamentals. But this is what we didn't know. Why? Because we wasn't studying international law. Once you study international law, international law causes you to do what? Have hindsight's twenty twenty. When I started studying international law, it gave me now a purview over all the things we have been trying to do. International laws up here, constitutions are down here. So when I started studying international law, it helped me to understand everything beneath me, I had a bird's eye view to see all this down here. But when you down here, you can't see everything. Because you're trying to do municipal law, you, you can't, you can't see the trees because of the forest. But boy, when you start studying international law, you're looking down on everything and you can see the battlefield. You can see the chessboard a whole lot easier when you're standing over it like this. Versus being all the way down here with your chin and sitting on a table trying to look at the chessboard. You had a bird's eye view when you study international law. That's the truth. Let's continue. So. As we know, in studying. France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, which is the blueprint. And nineteen fifty-two was not that long ago. Right? Talking about what? Seventy-three years ago? Some of my parents is seventy, seventy-three years old. So we're right within this generation, right? So this, that doesn't say seventeen fifty-two, it's nineteen fifty-two. Why do the Moors know about this? Because your Moorish American teachers don't teach you about it, it's that easy. We gotta study it, we'll keep talking about it, it's the blueprint. Why am I talking about that? Okay. Public Law eight fifty-six. Right, all the Moors know about Public Law eight fifty-six. We started studying it. Because we're like, the United States of America relinquished consul jurisdiction in Morocco. So. Whose job wasn't to restore consul court? Moors. We're the Moroccans. We're the custodians of our own Moroccan treaties. We were supposed to restore consul court. The Americans were never supposed to be sitting in consul court as the judges. They don't wear fezzes, we wear fezzes. They're not Moroccans, we're Moroccans. So what happened in nineteen fifty-two? The International Court of Justice. Since the Moors are still asleep. And the Moors would run around calling themselves Moorish American, and no such thing as Moorish American in the treaty. It made us absolutely incompetent because we didn't know who we are. But yet Moors love to talk about contracts, but we didn't even know our names in the contract. So, so the ICJ awarded the United States of America with a limited jurisdiction. Which means limited civil and criminal jurisdiction with its courts over Moors until Moors stopped acquiescing. What does acquiesce mean? Means it's a tacit, we agree by silent agreement because we did not do what? We did not declare our independence and then establish a constitution like all the other civilized people on planet Earth have constitutions. There's fifty-five states in Africa. Fifty-four out of the fifty-five have a constitution. Israel don't have a constitution, all the rest of them have a constitution. There's fifty states in Europe, all of them have a constitution. Where's the Moors constitution? You see? But yeah, we want to act like we're the civilized, and we're the kings, and we're the empress, and we're the queen, and we're the pharaoh, and we're the sultan. We got all these self-appointed titles like we, we were in such higher self, and we don't even know the party name in the contract. How about we start with that before we give ourselves an official title? How about we find out our nationality? I'm telling these truths right now, because if I don't, if I don't disclose these truths, we'll never fix it. We have delayed our own justice. So in nineteen fifty-two. The United States finds out, they're like, dang. The United States was hoping they could find out, they could hold on to a permanent. Jurisdiction in Morocco, but the court said, no. The treaties do not give you the right to oversee consul court. However. Someone's gotta maintain civil and criminal jurisdiction in every state on planet Earth. There must be what? Order. So since the United States of America was the competent ones at the time, because Moors didn't have three branches of government, the ICJ said, look, we gonna give you a temporary jurisdiction over Moors. Temporary, but once the Moors make the proper claim based upon the ordinary methods of international law, i.e. make a Declaration of Independence and restore a constitution and ratified, deposed, promulgated, and according to international law. Then we can automatically get all our rights back. This is what the ICJ is saying, this is what the United Nations is saying. Now listen, so after nineteen fifty-two, look what happens next. The United States of America comes back home, and they leave the United Nations, or should I say the ICJ, the head, over the Netherlands. They come back and say. We got good news, we got bad news. The good news is, we still got jurisdiction over Moors. The bad news is, it's limited. So what's the timeframe of limited? Well, we don't know. But we'll find out when Moors make a proper land claim through a ratified, deposed, and promulgated constitution. They knew that timeline was whatever. So from nineteen fifty-two. To nineteen fifty-six. Okay, Public Law eight fifty-six was written in nineteen fifty-six. Okay? Nineteen fifty-six. So four years after they leave, leave the ICJ. They start to enact legislation within four years. Why? Because the ICJ gave them an order saying, you gotta go back. And you have to relinquish what's called the regime of capitulations, that's number one. And you also have to give up extra territoriality jurisdiction as soon as the Moors make a proper claim. Okay, as soon as they do it. So what did the United States of America do? They came back, they said regarding consul court. They put together these codified language. And they said, okay, on the Public Law eight fifty-six, what does the eight, the five, and the six represent? Well, the eight represents August, the five, six represents nineteen fifty-six. Right, so what, what's the reference point on that? Okay, go to the bottom. There's the date. August first nineteen fifty-six, so it's eight, five, six, you see? Codified language, okay. So. But it's, so it's Public Law eighty-six, eight fifty-six, then they turn around and have other codified language, right? Here's the code. United States Code, right, two, two, USC one four one and one four three, but this also classified as Title twenty-two. Section two. Section one four one and one four three, that's another way they write it, right? But they also codified it like this, statute, eight stat. Four eight four, three four stat twenty-nine oh five. That's another codified language, right? Right, you following me so far? Now what is it all about? Let's go back to the board. So when the Moorish American teachers tell you, oh, man, uh, C and B put together this number right here, then no one's ever been able to prove, by the way. It's only the guise of C and B, you gotta catch what I'm saying? So the Moorish American teachers say, oh, man, it's eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one, it's all about liberation of Moors. No, it isn't. It's a placeholder number for an inmate number. Because it's under Title twenty-two, Chapter two, Section one four one, which is two, 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 one, four, one. Two, 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 one, four, one, which is eight stat four eight four, three four stat twenty-nine oh five, which is Public Law eight fifty-six, August first nineteen fifty-six. It's all about the United States Department of Justice. We're gonna get to that in just a second. So let me prove it to you. So you got your two, 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 one, four, one, right? And what is it all about? Watch this. Whereas the law of the United States invests the ministers and consuls of the United States in certain countries, including Morocco. With judicial authority so far as the exercise of the same is allowed by treaty. So the exercise of what? Judicial authority. Is allowed by treaty. Isn't that Article Three, Section two of the Constitution of United States of America? So Moors keep challenging the magistrate and don't realize. Public Law eight fifty-six, which is two, 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 one, four, one, gave the United States of America jurisdiction over who? Moors, what type of moor? Acquiescing Moors who are agreeing to stay in the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. Then it continues to say this right here. Whereas the consuls of the United States in Morocco. Are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals. Who keep calling themselves American nationals? Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans tell you, man, we're the Americans. Okay, guess what? The United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals, i.e. Moorish Americans, under the treaty between the United States and Morocco. So the treaties are giving the United States of America the civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors, lawfully and legally. All in the name of eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one. You see what's happening? Start from here. Whereas the consul of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise civil and criminal jurisdiction over American nationals. Under the treaty between the United States and Morocco, so that's the key. Why would they be talking about American nationals, then they turn around and talk about Morocco? It's because they're telling you, these Moors who keep calling themselves Americans because they've been naturalized are actually the Moroccans. Who've been naturalized as what? Americans. And the treaties gave jurisdiction over. Anybody to call themselves American. But the treaty automatically gave the United States of America jurisdiction over Moors subjects and proteges as well. We'll learn about that, okay? So from the top. Whereas the consul of the United States in Morocco are permitted to exercise jurisdiction over American nationals under the treaty between the United States and Morocco, signed September sixteen eighteen thirty-six, Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And the Act of Outstairs signed April seventh. Which is the Act of Outstairs, right? Signed nineteen oh six, and they exercised by customary usage the same jurisdiction over subjects of Morocco. Or others who may be designated as proteges under the Convention of Madrid, signed July third eighteen eighty. They mentioned three treaties that give the United States of America jurisdiction over Moors. And now they're enforcing it through Article Three, Section two of the Constitution of the United States of America. And Moors don't realize it's all assessed back to eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one. Okay. This document came from Harvey Bay Publications, Moors are familiar with this document. It's about the legal name change, or they say, it's not a name change, it's a name correction. Semantics. Stop it already. So soon you see this document. The Harvey Bay Publications is pushing on the people. This is fraud, but what's the worst part? Go to the bottom. And look what they're saying is giving them the jurisdiction for you to change your name. Look. Look, look what they, this is their document. Number two, United States Republic Department of Justice. Moorish American credentials, eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one. So eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one is assessed to what? Department of Justice. Moors ain't asking no questions. So what is Moorish American credentials? No, that's a placeholder number for you about to become an inmate. This is a placeholder number for inmate number. You know what your cell gonna be? A one. Harvey Bay Publications. And guess who signed it? You did. Moors are signing it, the black people. One day they black, the next day they're Moorish Americans, because they signed this document overnight, and they signed it and agreed to. Eight, eight, two, 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 one, four, one, that's a A, A, two, 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 one, four, one. That's assessed to the Department of Justice. Does this make any sense to anybody? Okay, let's talk about this A, A, two, 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 one, four, one again, last time. A, A, two, 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 one, four, one is a placeholder number for you about to be an inmate. How do I know? Because it's about the United States Department of Justice. Well, where'd I get that from? Araby Publications. And they told you in your face. But you were so happy to get that fake nationality card. You were so in a rush to sign any documentation where you thought it would get you some liberation, and guess what they did? Put you right back into slavery. This is the truth. Why am I saying the truth? Because I didn't write it. But I'm exposing it, but you should have read it yourself. And what do our Moors American teachers tell us? Well, the problem is, Moors can't read and those who can read won't. Have Moors been seeing this on the document? The Department of Justice is affiliated to A, A, two, 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 one, four, one? We didn't really notice that, did we? This is absolutely asinine. This is shameful, because let me tell you why it's shameful. Let let me just tell you. You know why it's shameful? Because the reality is this. We're all in this together. A Moor is just simply a Moor. The colonists don't try to separate us based upon temple Moor, civic Moor, black, brown, they they just say all of them are what? Moors, I E. Negroes. We're all in this together. But yet this is what we're doing to each other. This is the sad part. The colonists didn't write this. The colonists did not write this. Your fellow Moor wrote this. And put it under the guise of C and B. You think C and B wrote that to put you on the Department of Justice? Isn't that Feds? Department of Justice Feds. You know, Feds got jurisdiction over? I'll tell you. Public Law eight fifty-six. Public Law eight fifty-six is about what? It's about jurisdiction? It's about counsel jurisdiction of the United States over Moors who are atweas. We gotta talk about this, Moors. This is not about pointing fingers at Araby Publications. This is about talking about their own truth. This is their truth, isn't it? If they know that public law eight fifty-six and A, A, two, 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 one, four, one is tied back to this because they themselves said that A, A, two, 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 one, four, one is assessed back to Department of Justice, then why are they asking us to use that number? We're all in this together. We gotta fix it. Now we're gonna switch it up a little bit. I'm going to show you a video. This is a good, this is a, this is a video of Good Brother Tahaka Ben. I like Good Brother Tahaka Ben. He he's 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 kicks, right? He's funny. I like him because he got he got good spirit, good energy. He's a highly intelligent brother. The reason why I really respect him, because he he is one hundred percent behind Noobadra Ali. I respect that. I respect that. He supports the temple. I respect that. So he re he put this video out, right? About three years ago. About three years ago. And he was talking about nation states. Now, this video on YouTube is, why are we Moors American and not Moroccan American? Okay, Tahaka, you you gotta go back and study, brother. We we gonna talk about that today, because I like your brother Tahaka. But he's got some misconceptions, right? But he's on the yellow brick road. I'm gonna show you a video of him talking about nation states and what Moors should do to establish ourselves. You see, Good Brother Tahaka knows that we need states. He knows. He he's saying nation state. We'll talk about that, all right? Now, I'm gonna pause the video a few times throughout. It's about twenty-three minutes. I'll pause it about four or five times to, you know, give my interpretations or say something in response to what he's saying, all right? Okay, now, once again, I want to say for the record, this is not a disrespectful thing I'm saying about Good Brother Tahaka. I I respect the brother, but let's just go back and take a look at what he said for the record, okay? All right, so we can learn. AIPAC Study Sessions was an educational platform. We had to study, 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 right? But I want to show you that Good Brother Tahaka knows the truth about what we need to decolonize and restore our nation. Now, this starts, I'm starting this, Moors, for record, at approximately the one hour and forty-minute mark, okay? And we'll watch it up into the two-hour and three-minute mark, but it's a two-hour and seven-minute video. Go back and watch the whole thing if you want. I just want to show you about twenty-three minutes of it, okay? That's Jermaine to my subject matter today. Okay?
A part of the nation state called Morocco. They are part of the nation state called Morocco. And so today we live in a nation state era of time. We do not live in a tribal nation of time, nor do we live in an empire time. We don't live in an empire right now. We don't identify ourselves by an empire name. We don't identify ourselves by a tribal name legally, although we do not disconnect our tribes. We still acknowledge it, just like ancient Moabite. That's a tribal name. Falani, that's a tribal name. You see, Igbo, that's a tribal name. We don't disconnect ourselves to that. The Washata, that's a tribal name. You follow me? That's a tribal name. We don't disconnect ourselves to our tribes because those are just as significant. But in today's world, we live in a nation state. And live in living in a nation state, people identify themselves by nation state terminology. Hence, Moroccan, that's a nation state. Nigeria, another nation state. Algeria, nation state. You follow me? These are nation states. Kenya.
You notice he's being specific. He's talking about states. Right? He's talking statehood. He's pointing out states that are recognized by the international community. They have a border, they have three branches of government, and they're self-governing. He's saying nation state. Listen.
Nation states. United States, nation state. Mexico, nation state. Let me. So those are nation states. Now, here's the kicker. Here's the kicker. This is a new era of time now. This is a new era of time now, and all men must proclaim their nationality. Let me. Must proclaim their nationality. Let me show you what the Prophet Noobadra Ali trying to do for you. What he's trying to do for you is not to disconnect you from your ancient ancestors, but trying to reconnect to your ancient ancestors. So Prophet Noobadra Ali says that you are Moors American. Right? So here we go. You are Moors American. But hold up. If you look at French Americans, they have a land that they come from called France. Let me. And we are nation state. We're not a nation state. We live in a nation state. The nation state that we live in is called the United States.
Hear what he just said? He told one of his people in the chat, we're a nation, but we're being governed by another nation state called the United States of America. See, he's 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 admitting that he knows we've been naturalized, that we are totally group, separate group from the Americans. He knows we're Moroccans, but we've been naturalized by the United States of America. Right? So as he keeps talking, he gives you a proper concept and context, right? So what he says is, United States of America, right? Has subjugated the Moors. So he's saying, United States of America is a nation, and the Moors is a nation, but we are a nation that doesn't have what? A nation state. He's saying, United States of America is a nation state. Moors have been subjugated, even though we're Moors, we don't have our own nation state. Right? Listen to how he's talking about nation state, but he knows we've been subjugated. Listen.
That's the nation state that we live in. But but hold up. Don't don't trip. We messed up. We chose to serve God to you or who we knew nothing of. We messed up. The only way we're gonna fix it is to understand the divine prophet. So what Prophet Noobadra Ali is doing is reconnecting us to our ancient Moors people. You follow me? Is to connect us to our ancient Moors people. And so he establishes us as Moors American. All right? He establishes us as Moors American descendants from the Moroccan Empire, descended from the ancient Moors people.
So Tahaka is admitting that we're from what? The ancient Moors Empire, the Moroccan Empire. He's admitting that Noobadra Ali, that he, Noobadra Ali, said we're Moors Americans. Maybe he said it, maybe he didn't, because his works got infiltrated. But let's just say for the sake of argument, that Noobadra Ali said we're Moors Americans, that this is the empire Morocco. Tahaka's admitting it. But listen to how he gets into further explanation. That's why I love this video. Listen.
Follow me? All right, so in history, you're not going to find a nation state called Moors, but you will find the people. You hear me? In ancient times, you're not gonna find a nation state called Moors.
So what's the name of the ancient state? Morocco. For who? Moroccans. Isn't this what Noobadra Ali told us? There's no such thing as a state called just simply Moors. However, the word Moors means what? Moroccan. So he's right, but at the same time, he's 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 not explaining that part well. If he would say it's about the ancient Moroccan Empire and just step at that, fine. But when he says there's no state called Moors, that's because he hasn't read the treaty to find out the word Moors means Moroccan. That's all. But he's on point. Listen, this is good study.
You won't find that, but you will find the Moori people from a tribal conglomerate to an empire conglomerate. And that empire extended all the way to the Americas. North, South, Central America. All throughout Africa, even into Europe. You follow me? But you won't find a Moors nation state. The Prophet comes to re-establish that Moors nation state through you proclaim.
The Prophet came to restore a nation state. Okay, where's the nation state? The Moors hadn't reestablished it yet. You can't say the word state without the proper written instrument called what? Constitutions. Those constitutions have to be ratified, deposited, promulgated in accordance to international law.
I mean, your nationality. Why does he use the term Moors? Because the Moors people, Moori people, was the last stronghold that we identified with globally. It was the last.
Well, Good Brother Tahaka, it's because the word Moors is in the Act of Seris of nineteen oh six. One hundred and twenty-three articles refers to us as the Moors government. So by the time Noobadra Ali's reading these const, these uh treaties, he's seen Moors government in the Act of Seris. But you but you gotta know that Good Brother Tahaka, when I'm talking about the treaty, so he he probably hasn't read the Act of Seris. I'm just assuming that. Right? So you gotta understand, by the time Noobadra Ali got here, the Act of Seris already written. It was well-set a principle in nineteen oh six. Noobadra Ali shows up seven years later, nineteen thirteen. You gonna sit here and tell me that he didn't read the treaties? Of course, Noobadra Ali saw the treaties. So he's telling us, we're Moors Americans. We're Moors that's been naturalized in America.
It's stronghold. It was the last dominant position that we held around the world. We held the keys to ancient Kemit. We held the keys. When you look at the Dogon people, they are descended of the Moori people. When you look at the Ghana, uh, 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 empire, they are descended from the Moori people. When you look at Timbuktu, they are descended from the Moori people. When you look at the dominant people on the planet, in this era of time, they are descended from the Moori people. So, in other words, in other words, brother, you need to see the beginning of the show, brother, because you 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 missed. And I already cleared that up. Moor is not Romanized African. I gotta remove that. You know what I mean? But now, so the Prophet is saying this is a new era of time now, and all men must proclaim their free national name to be recognized by the government in which they live and the nation that they're in. And this is the reason why Allah, the great God, ordained Prophet, Noobadra Ali, the Prophet, to redeem his people from their sinful ways. The Prophet was ordained. The Prophet was ordained to bring forth this construct, to bring us back into the families of nations. To bring us back into the families of nations. Alaihbarakallahu, if you're not a part of a temple, I cannot defeat you, because I'm giving you Moors concepts, not uh, uh, rhetoric. This is Moors concepts. These are Moors concepts. You have to be a part of the Moors Science Temple of America. You don't have to subscribe to these concepts. This this show is about why we are Moors American and not Moroccan American. We're not Moroccan American because we are not Moroccan citizens. We are in a nation state. We are in a nation state.
What does he mean by that? Okay, let me explain it again. He said, we're not Moroccan citizens. Because he said, we're in a nation state. What's the nation state in his opinion? The United States of America. He said, we've been subjugated as Moors. So we don't have our own nation state. We're subjugated people. So he said, we ain't Moroccans yet, because we don't have our own Moroccan nation state. So he said that we have capitulated to be what? Americans. Moors have capitulated to be Americans, because Americans are nation state and we're subjugated underneath them. That's why I'm trying to say, the reason why we're Moors Americans, because we say Moors, we're Moroccans that's subjugated by Americans. But the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one, said we have an obligation to return to Morocco. We're supposed to return to Morocco. We're supposed to get out of subjugation and nationalization status and return to Morocco, so we have our own nation state. That's what the treaty says. Treaty is an obligation. Treaty is supreme law of the land. That was an obligation. This is why the Moors push back on the word Moroccan. They keep saying they're Americans. It's because they think they're Americans of the American state. But we're subjugated people. We're naturalized. You gotta hear what he's saying. Let's continue.
If you're not a part of the temple, you don't understand. And if you're not a part of the temple, I want you to, I'm trying to help you to understand. Let me, I'm trying to help you to understand. So Moors is connecting us to our ancient forefathers. Let me. Moors is connecting us to our ancient empires. Moors is connecting us to our ancient, uh, 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 dynasties. Moors is connecting us to ancient Kemit. Moors is connecting us to all the ancient greatness that we had and that we will have again. But we must establish it.
We must establish it. What? How do you establish another nation state? It's called Declaration of Independence, ratified deposit constitution, like other fifty-five African states in Africa became a nation state by declaring independence and drafting a constitution and then ratifying, depositing, promulgating it in accordance to international law. That's how they became a nation state. They went from being That's how they became a nation state. They went from being colonized people Africans to having a nation state. And they had to do what? Establish it. Okay, Tahaka, you talking right. But has he done it? No. This video's three years old. Listen.
We must establish it. Alright? We must establish it. You follow me? We must establish it. Now, let me give you some proof on this. Prophet Noobadra Ali teaches very basic truths. Because when many people talk about the Moorish Americans, and they don't understand how it works, what I'm telling you is that we must establish it. Okay, truth seeker, truth seeker, you're wrong. Moorish Americans are not a nation. They are five oh one, C three tax exemption. That's not true, truth seeker. You're wrong again. And don't you just learn for a second. So the Moorish Americans must establish themselves. This was the purpose of Prophet Noobadra Ali being brought into this world, to establish ourselves as this ancient nation in modern times. I'm gonna say it again. We are to establish ourself from ancient times in this modern world. Period, point blank.
Period, point blank. So we must take our ancient times, Sankofa, and bring it to modern day. Well, how do you do that? Okay, you gotta go from being under the subjugation, United States of America's nation state, and establishing our own nation state. In modern time, we needed what? Modern constitution. That's the only way to declare your own people to have decorations of independence, same way the Africans did.
So no difference than one of the people would, people would call us a stateless nation.
Oh.
Understand what a stateless nation is.
We're listening?
A stateless nation would be a nation within a nation that are not exclusively on their own as a nation.
Amen, good brother Tahaka. So what you're saying, brother Tahaka, is the Moors are stateless. Because the Moors haven't done what? The Moors haven't established themselves as a nation state. Moors are still subjugated. Stateless people, because we're coming under the protection status of United States of America, and Moors are subjugated, naturalized Americas underneath the jurisdiction, civil criminal jurisdiction of America's nation state. Tahaka said, "We're stateless, and we need to establish, establish a nation state." The only way to establish a modern nation state is through a declaration of independence and a constitution in each of the territories. That's exactly what the Ampak has done, for the record. Listen. He's telling these truths.
You feel me? So, in other words, in law, as a nation of people, although we are part and partial of this said government, in law, we would be known as a stateless nation, because...
I just said it. Tahaka said, "We're stateless." He said, "In law, we're known as stateless people." Why? Because we don't have a constitution that's been ratified, depolite, promulgated in accordance to international law. We're not what? We're not self-governing as a nation state. We're under the protection of United States of America, calling ourselves Americans. We've been naturalized. And this is what he's trying to tell us. We gotta come back over here. We're stateless.
We're a nation within a nation without our own land, but we're still a nation. You don't understand that?
Yes.
And this would be in law. You follow me?
Yes.
Now, but that doesn't stop you from being a nation. That doesn't stop you from being a nation. For example, when you look at the Palestinian Liberation Operation, they are a nation, but they were considered to be a stateless nation because the occupiers, which would be the Hebrews, not the Hebrews, the Jews took over that area. You follow?
Yeah, we follow. So the Palestinians are subjugated people underneath who? Their people call themselves the Jewish community. So the Jewish community claiming to be the so-called Israelites. Why do, why do I say so-called? Because if they haven't established a constitution. Right? They have no constitution, but yet they're claiming they're overseeing Palestinians. But what the Palestinians need to do in order to get their liberation, they need to establish a nation state. And guess what they did in two thousand and three? They established a constitution. We're talking about that. But listen to what he's saying. So he's saying, "Oh, sorry about that Tahaka. That's a lucky picture." So cover that up. Sorry about, respect to the good brother. So he's talking about how Palestinian people are just like Moors in the jurisdiction of America. Right? Let's continue.
There you go, brother. There you go. He the water TV. He the water TV. Now, he the water TV. You got it. You know what I mean? He the water TV. You got it. So when you look at, and I would just go into Palestinian. When you look at the Palestinians, when you look at the Palestinians, it's, it's a nation of people who are not autonomously governing on their own land.
Moorish Americans are not autonomously governing themselves in their own land. How do you get autonomy away from the United States? You need to establish a constitution in your own land. That's what Palestine did. They said, "No, we need independence." How'd they do it? Constitution. We're talking about it. Tahaka's right.
Because they have been occupied, for whatever reason it is. They have been colonized, they've been, so whatever it is. You see what I'm saying? So now, the Moorish American is the same. I can give you another one. Kosovo. In Kosovo, it happened in Kosovo, the Kurds, there we go. Y'all with me, man? Man, we got a spot audience, man. Tell them, though. The Kurds is one of the largest, what you would call stateless nations. It doesn't mean that they're stateless, because they all are part of a nation in which they live in.
So where do the Moors, Moors live right now? The Moors live in the jurisdiction of the Wizard of Oz. Oz is America. The Wizard is the Department of Justice. Right? So Moors are living under the jurisdiction of the United States of America as conquered people, i.e. stateless. What does stateless mean? We don't have our own constitutions. That's what stateless means. We have to self-government through three branches of government.
They only refer to them as stateless, because they don't have a land and autonomy separate from the country and what they in. You feel what I'm saying? The brother, he's, man, but I can close the door now. Man. And so this is the Moorish American, man.
This is the Moorish American story. We're stateless, because we don't have constitutions. All civilized people on planet Earth enact a constitution. Then they follow the instructions. They go and be positive with the United Nations. All states on planet Earth have done this, except for who? The stateless Moors, i.e. Moroccans.
I need to give y'all self a hand, man. Y'all gotta give y'all self a hand, man.
Thank you, brother.
So now, the Moorish Science Temple of America is that place that establishes this nation, start...
Now, I gotta pause right there. Now, like I said at the beginning, I respect the good brother. Right? He is one hundred percent for Noobadra Ali, and he loved the temple. So now he gotta put his plug in there for the temple, right? Now, now, let's keep it real. A temple is not a state. Right? Well, we all know this. The common sense tells you that, right? So I respect the brother, because he wants everybody to come to the temple, because that's his thing. That's his opinion. Right? But he also knows, if he keeps saying the word nation state, he knows the temple's not a state. If he keeps saying, "We gotta establish it," then guess what? The temple's already established. So he's talking futuristic. What's the futuristic? State, not temple. Alright, so you gotta let him slide with that, okay? But, but also, look, let's look up here. You see what he got going on? He got the United States of America's flag in a, what's called a superior position. Anybody that's been in the military understands, you put, in turn the flag, you put the powerful flag to the left, and you put the subordinate flag to the right. You see what he did? He put the United States of America's flag to the left and the Moroccan flag to the right. Why? It's because he knows he's subjugated under the jurisdiction of United States of America, so he's recognized this being a superior nation state. He's, he's accepting his subjugation status. Instead of him trying to get, get out of the Wizard of Oz jurisdiction and come back to Morocco, instead, he's accepted the status of this flag being superior. And this flag has never been superior according to what? Treaties. Treaty's supreme law of the land. No matter how long time goes by, treaties are perpetual. So therefore, this flag is supposed to be to the right, and the Moroccan flag is supposed to be to the left. Period. Alright, let's continue.
Now, with us self-identifying ourselves as Moorish Americans. You follow me? The Moorish Science Temple of America is the central authority to establish yourself from self-identification as a Moorish American. And that...
No, that's not, okay Tahaka, you going too far now. Okay, brother. Right here, even in the bottom screen, right here, it says charter. Charter, the Moorish Science Temple, charter, right there. It's not a state. You cannot get your liberation from your occupation through a church, through a temple, through a mosque, or synagogue. You can't get it. You cannot decolonize through a charter. You can't decolonize through a temple. You just can't do it. So I respect you, good brother, and I know you hyping up the temple, and, and I commend you for that, because you're all about the temple. That's why I respect what you're saying, but at the same time, it's a misconception, good brother. Everything is about state. You keep saying nation state. You can't say Palestine is gonna get their rights through a temple. Palestine can get their rights through what? A state, right? Okay, brother. Let's go.
You must build it. So the Prophet Noobadra Ali says, "I bought you everything you need to save your nation. Now, take it and save yourself." In other words, he establishes our identity connected with our ancient forefathers, and now, we must build it. See what I'm saying? We must build it.
How do we build it? That's the question. If he's recognizing we're subjugated by the United States of America, nation state, then Moors underneath the subjugation of the nation state as naturalized people, and he said, "We need to build it," how do you build a nation? It's called the proper written instrument. What's the proper written instrument? Constitution. So Declaration of Independence, letting the world know through proclamation, we can ready to declare our independence through a proper written instrument called a constitution. That's the first building block. Until then, you remain subjugated. It's all about the pen, Moors. All we needed was a laptop, some blank piece of paper, and a printer to print all fifteen pieces of paper, and the top of the header says what? Constitution. That's all we ever needed. It's a competent constitution that names the nationality of the people as being Moroccans in Morocco, and then we sign it with our three branches of government. We do what next? We send it to the United Nations, Secretary General, according to Article one oh two. You know how long that takes in our reality? Less than thirty days. By the time you write it, sign it, put a stamp on it, and send it off. We could have knocked this out decades ago. Okay, let's keep talking about how we build it. You wanna tell us how to build it, Tahaka? No. Just messing with you, good brother. Keep going.
We must build it. Now, let me show you one thing. The reason why we are, uh, uh, convinced beyond a shadow of doubt who we are is because when you look at the slave trade, no matter where you look at the slave trade, you will find that they came from Moors. You can't get around it. They came from Moors. They all came from Moors. You follow me? They came from Moors. The slaves came from Moors. Whether the Moors was here, whether the Europeans came, and they changed their name to something, to a tribal identification, whether they was in Brazil and they changed their name to a tribal identification, they came from Moors. You follow me? They came from Moors. Truth seeker, understand that the Moorish American must establish himself. Alright? The Moorish American must establish himself. The Moorish American is not qualified as somebody else qualifying them. We must establish ourself, and that was the purpose of Prophet Noobadra Ali.
We must establish ourselves. Which means we gotta stop marching and praying. We gotta stop pleading. We gotta stop taking shortcuts with these writs and affidavits. We gotta stop taking shortcuts with already-made publications. And I hate to say it, no disrespect to the good brother, we gotta stop taking shortcuts through the temple. We gotta go directly at it and just simply write constitutions for each of the territories. What do I mean when I say each of the territories? Well, the state of Arkansas and the state of Alabama are trust territories. The state of Arkansas and the state of Alabama need to be restored into what? Nation states. Moroccan provincial state governments within the Empire of Morocco. The United States of America has fifty-plus constitutions. The Moors need fifty-plus constitutions in each of the territories.
Because in this era of time, black does not connect us with our illustrious history. African-American does not connect us with our illustrious history. The only thing that connects us with our illustrious history is starting with the term Moor. Starting with...
So he said, "Our history starts with the word Moor." The Treaty of Peace and Friendship, seventeen eighty-seven, and eighteen thirty-six talks about Moors. So our history starts with the treaties, because Treaty's supreme law of the land. When in doubt, pull out the treaties. If our history starts with the word Moor, then why aren't we starting with the treaties? Then go to the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Then you go up to the Treaty of the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six. All these came out before Noobadra Ali established the Old Canonite Temple of nineteen thirteen. So he's right. Start with the word Moor. Did he say start with the word Moorish American? He said start with the word Moor.
The term Moor. When you start with the term Moor, it opens the door to your illustrious history. But now, in order to build on it, you have to go to the main that was sent by God in order to build it. That was Prophet Noobadra Ali, and that is founded in the Moorish Science Temple of America. This is why people say, "I disagree. I disagree." You know what I mean? My family was living this life before Noobadra Ali. No, they wasn't. They wasn't living the life of a Moorish American. Prophet Noobadra Ali establishes the Moorish American in this era of time. He establishes the Moorish American in this era of time, connecting us to the ancient Bari-Bari people, connecting us to the ancient Amazon people, connecting us to the ancient Moorish people, connecting us to the ancient Morbite people, connecting us to the ancient Canaanites, the Eretites, the Everites, the Morbites, connecting us to our line in genealogy. Prophet Noobadra Ali did that. Nobody did that before Prophet Noobadra Ali.
I agree with the good brother. Noobadra Ali gave us back the Enlightenment. Noobadra Ali should be held in high esteem. That's why he's their honorable prophet. He is the master. The master of what? Reading the treaties and telling us what to expect if in fact we learn how to enforce the treaties against the colonizers. So yes, Noobadra Ali is the master. And we should never... And we should never, ever try to outshine the master. We should always hold him near to our hearts. That must be understood. So we should all give credit to Noam Drualee because this is the reason why we have feds. This is why Allah's name is Bey and Il and Day and Ali and Al. It's because of Noam Drualee. That don't get me wrong, Noam Drualee is probably other moors around at that time, but no one took the time to go out front and talk to us about moors. He put his life on the line to bring us back this enlightenment. So we should respect him because there is no Jay Bey without Noam Drualee. There's no, there's no Bays whatsoever without Noam Drualee. Let's continue.
And to teach us as a collective, nobody did it. Nobody did it before Prophet Noam Drualee. Nobody. Nobody group collectively, broke people together in the name of identity to who on a national stage with who we are. Nobody done it before Prophet Noam Drualee, nobody. Nobody. Nobody did it. We have to self-identify ourselves in this era of time so our people can know who we are. You know what I mean? So the people can know who we are. We need to, we felt, the problem is this. Most Moorish Americans don't understand that we must establish ourselves. We must do it. Like, we looking for us to be established. When the Prophet Noam Drualee said that you must proclaim your nationality to be recognized by the government in what you live, you first must proclaim and they will recognize you. That doesn't mean that they know what it means, you may have to explain it to them. To be recognized by the government in what you live in the nations of the earth? You have to proclaim it first. You have to make it your own.
Now, let me clear up from misconception that he's saying here. You notice how he pointed like this? He said he wants United States, America to recognize us as being moors. Wrong concept. It's his responsibility to look in this direction to recognize ourselves as Moroccans. To decolonize. That way, it represents two different parties of the contract. We should not be seeking to be recognized as still being subjugated people. You don't want United States, America to recognize you as a Moor? No, you want your own Moroccan state government such as Ampax flag. We have our own provincial state flag. We have our own seal, we recognize ourselves as Moroccans in Morocco and our provincial state government within the empire Morocco. This has nothing to do with the United States, America recognizing it. We recognized ourselves, we established ourselves. We rebuilt ourselves, we restored our jurisdiction, formerly known as Colorado. Now, so go to your Moorish premium, I take Colorado. Commonly known as Ampax. We did that for ourselves, we recognized ourselves, as he said, as a group. But you don't wait until these people recognize, you don't wait till United States, America recognize, it's not the way it works. Why do they need to recognize you when it's Morocco that recognize the United States, America? You don't wait till your tenant recognizes the landlord. The landlord recognizes the tenant. Let's continue.
You have to make it your own. And this is for Moorish Americans. So, so you don't have to make Moroccan American your own because that's not you. You was before the nation-state of Morocco. You have to make Moorish American your own because the moors, the Maori people been here before the nation-state of Morocco. The Maori.
So that's another misconception. He's talking about the kingdom of Morocco. The King Morocco been established since what? 1956 until present. Before there was a king in Morocco, there was an empire in Morocco, he talked about the empire in Morocco. So that's a slight mis, misconception of his. You can't change your consequenty. Your consequenty is just Moroccan, but you've been subjugated and naturalized as being Americans. And then moors made up this hybrid called Moorish American. But Moorish means Moroccan. American is just American. But we created this hybrid, right? This compound word or hyphenated and put two different parties together. It's a third-party interload. Or at the very least, it's a placeholder name, at the very least, but it is not a nationality. The treaty says what? Two separate nations. Morocco for Moroccans and American jurisdiction for Americans, but the American jurisdiction is where? In Morocco. No different than an Indian reservation.
People been here before the nation-state of the United States. The Maori people are ancient people, but you must establish it. Now, last but not least. Last but not least. DNA does not qualify you as a Moor, although it can put you in a geographical location. It can put you in a geographical location, but it does not establish you nationality. Alright? It does not establish you nationality. DNA does not establish you nationality. Let me share something with you real quick.
Alright, now listen up, this is good what he's about to talk about. This is what Ampax Study Session talks about, listen up. He's gonna share something with us.
One second. What is nationality?
Good question.
Nationality. Nationality. Nationality is a universal thing. Nationality is the state of being a part of a nation, whether by birth or naturalization or ties to a specific nation. Understand, family, nationality, this has nothing to do, this not put you in the box. This is for the world. The whole world uses this. The whole world. The whole world. Nationality is the state of being a part of a nation, whether by birth or naturalization or ties to a specific nation. An example of nationality is German to German person born in Germany. Alright, that's one example. B, an example of nationality is Italian to a person with Italian roots born in the United States. That would be you. A Moor with Moorish roots born in the United States. You following me? An example of nationality is an Italian to a person with Italian roots born in the United States. Let's flip it. An example of nationality is a Moor to a person with Moor roots born in the United States. Hence Moorish American. Now, when we look at DNA, it says that regulating according to DNA may be ethnically sound, not to mention inaccurate with determining a person's nationality. DNA cannot determine a nationality, why? The reason why DNA cannot turn, uh, uh, let me see if I got it real quick. DNA cannot determine a nationality is because nationality is a legal construct. If I can find it. That.
Nationality is a legal construct, what is he trying to say? What's a legal construct? He's talking about a state. What is a state? That's a legal construct established by what? A constitution. Which means somebody had to get a pen and make a legal construct of a proper written, proper written instrument of a constitution. And then all the national had to do what? All had to come back and pledge allegiance through an application to consent, right? To pledge allegiance to said state. We gotta come back to a state. That's what he's saying here. It's a legal procedure. That's what establishes nationality. Is your allegiance to the state. And he's also saying, listen to what else he's saying. He said Italians, when Italians come to the United States, they immediately become Americans because they're naturalized as Americans, but yet their consequenty is Italian. Listen to what he's saying.
Nationality is a legal construct, in other words. See if I can find it real quick. That nationality is a legal construct, period. Nationality is not. Oh, 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 one second. One second. Real quick. So yeah, nationality, let me see. Let me pull it up real quick, I think I can find it.
We're gonna pause it right there. Thank you, good brother. Taharq. So good brother was talking about Palestine. Palestine established a constitution here, 2003. 2003. Okay, and we start to close out. So Taharq is saying we need to build it, we need to establish it. When he talking about Palestine, but Palestine ain't talking about it no more. Palestine went out and did it, look what they said in that preamble. In the name of God, the merciful and the compassionate, the continuousness, attachment of the Arab Palestinian people to the land of their fathers and forefathers on which this, this people has historically lived is a fact that has been expressed in the Declaration of Independence issued by the Palestinian National Council. Distinct of this attachment is confirmed by its consistency over time and place, by keeping faith with and holding on to national identity and in the realization of wondrous accomplishments of struggle. The organic relationship between the Palestinian people, their history and their land has confirmed itself in their unceasing effort to promote the world to recognize the rights of Arab Palestinian people and their national entity on equal footing with other nations. So now they are on equal footing with other nations, why? Because they declare their independence and have a constitution. Look at this last sentence, we won't read anymore, we start to close out. The birth of the Palestinian nation, national authority and the national homeland of Palestine. So they wanna talk about homeland of Palestine, then what do they need? They need the authority of a constitution. That's how you restore your people's rights by self-determination. What does self-determination mean? You have to start with a constitution. The constitution is the first step in self-determination. Therefore, the state turns around and determines who's the nationals of the state. That's what we must understand. Right? So we start to close out. The reason why your brother Taharq is upset with already made publications because he goes in on them. Because he knows this stuff is fraudulent. He knows what already made publication is doing makes the Moorish Science Temple look bad. Moorish Science Temple moors aren't out here talking about enforcing the constitution. The Moorish Science Temple moors are saying, no, we are Americans, we're gonna abide by legislative acts, codes, etc. The civic moors are saying, nah, we don't go against that. But guess what? We all supposed to try to decolonize to return back to Morocco according to what? Treaties. Right? But as I start to close out, we'll never, ever get our independence if we keep subscribing to AA222141. Because that's a subjugation placeholder for inmate number. It's a conveyor belt right to jail. You keep using that number, you gonna lose your house, your car, your job, your children, and you might even lose your freedom when you go to jail. That must be understood, why? Because even already made publication says that this number is listed on the United States Department of Justice. Stop using this number. You're doing this to yourself. So they're trying to enforce what's called a settler nationality. At some point, why they enact Moroccan law that governs all moors? That says through that Moroccan law that we are Moroccans in Morocco, period. And any breach of that will be considered an act of genocide if you continue on with the propaganda and false teaching that we're Moorish Americans because I'll let the Moorish American title slide only because we don't have a Moroccan law yet. But until then, Moorish American, if you're making a compound word, at some point, you gotta just simply be Moorish and leave America, period. I am with that. Isma.